I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I assume you've had time to go over what you got on your phone for the December 1st, 2020, and January 4th minutes?
Yep, I make the motion to approve the minutes of December 21st and January 4th.
And I'll second that. And then we have payroll in the amount of $178,602.36.
I make the motion to approve payroll in the amount of $178,602.36.
And I'll second that. And we need to acknowledge the receipt of payroll claims, accounts payable, and the amount of $100,840.36.
Just looking at one more thing, can't stand there quick, and then I'll get there.
No, go right ahead.
Okay, I make a motion, we acknowledge receipt of payroll claims accounts payable report, $100,840.36.
And I'll second that. Now it looks like we have hand typed checks, four of them. Know-Before for 1,031.85, Travelers 8.37.20, Branson Insurance $9,239, and Branson Insurance for $126,749.
Any others?
This addition is two. Okay, those four.
Most of these are insurance claims, insurance bills, so...
Yeah, it's for the workman's comp, the two from Branson, I assume that we just renewed.
I make a motion, we approve the hand typed checks as presented to us, Know-Before, Travelers, and two for Branson Insurance.
And I'll second that. Okay, looks like we have four contracts here, one for Nick.
Anything we need to know, I mean, they're just standard indigent contracts.
One-year contract, fees are all the same, public defender representation, there's a fees in there if there's a jury trial, there's per day fees, which is standard, it's your standard public defender contract.
Okay. Same contracts we've basically signed every year.
Nothing's changed.
All right.
We can do all four at the same time, can't we? I'll make a motion that we approve the contracts for legal services for indigent defendants for four attorneys, Jeff Thomas, Mick Saunders, Justin Froge, and Jim Brewer.
And I'll second that.
I don't think there was any place on them.
Was there nowhere they need to be signed, they just needed a vote?
They were assigned by the public defender.
Okay.
It's just approval from the county.
Next, Cindy Todd. COVID-19 Response 3.
Got it, of course.
So that is the one for this Food Security Alliance program that we're establishing, so we're applying for that $250,000. So it requires a signature page from the applicant as part county, so Dan, I need your signature, and then...
Then Nick's on the back page.
And then Nick's on the other.
Yep.
That just states we have control, site control, to do this in that county.
Nick's on the other one on the back page, I think.
Nick, it's you, not me.
Oh, boy.
Okay, the hard payment for Kim Shorter.
So you got new payment systems, and just giving you guys information.
Kim's not here. I noticed in the paper, or not in the paper, or something that I had, I'd seen somewhere, that right now they're not taking anything but checks, money orders, and cash, they can't take any kind of...
Evidently, they haven't got it set up completely yet.
Electronic device for credit cards or whatever.
Right.
Is that correct, that you're aware of, that they're not taking any? Is this, then, supposedly the new credit card?
Yes.
Thing that... I wish she'd have been here to kind of tell us a little about it, as far as, you know, what it is.
I did, Laura said to give you the front page, there's the whole thing, if you want to glance through it.
It looks like they're better off if they actually swipe the card in, if they key in entry on the card, that's the only observation.
Did you want to look at this?
Have you looked at it?
I looked at it very quickly today, and I'm out here.
As I say, I gave you the front page.
How much is it? I didn't even...
I don't even know on that, I can't tell you what she paid on it.
Because this is the whole thing, I think Nick, unless she forwarded all of it to you, we didn't get the whole, all we got was the front page of the contract.
Yeah, it's just the signature page.
I forgot to make a copy of the whole thing for you.
I don't know what they mean, subject to downgrades and increased interchange fees, that was a language I really worked in when I wasn't able to see. I don't know what a downgrade would mean as far as that, I give the interchange fees would probably be an additional fee charge, but...
Does this have to be signed tonight, or would you prefer speaking with her?
I mean, if she just sent me the rest of the contract, then I can...
The whole thing's here.
Oh, you have it?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Here's the whole thing.
I don't, I don't see anything in here, and my thought is that, I don't know how much it's going to cost, don't know where she's going to pay for it, I assume she's got an appropriation, but I don't know that for sure, I just hate to, I know they need a con, a credit card, don't get me wrong, that's an important part of the office, just don't know enough about what's going on, that I feel comfortable approving something. I think we need to request that she come to the next meeting and explain what she's buying, how much it's going to cost, where she's going to pay for it from, that kind of thing.
And in the meantime...
Maybe you could see it, but I don't see a contract price anywhere on there.
I could look at it, as, do you have three other stuff that you want?
It don't matter, I'd agree with Bruce, I'd prefer her coming and kind of explain to us and let us know how much money it is and where it's coming from, and I have no problem table that until the first meeting.
Maybe Nick can see something, I just, looking through there, I don't see where it says, you know, we're out $20,000, $60,000, $100,000, I don't, I can't see anything in there on what we have to pay.
I don't think it's filled in, because they have on their card fee schedule and some other things, but it's all blank.
I just make, I'll just make a motion, and we table that until first meeting in February, and ask Kim to come represent it.
Okay, I can let her know.
Yeah, I think so, I mean, I just feel uncomfortable doing something unless I know a little bit more about what's going on, so do you mind just telling Kim if she could come to the next meeting and kind of give us the spiel on what we've got, how much it's going to be, and what the charges are going to be, and maybe it's a per swipe fee instead of a...
That's what it looks like, it's a per transaction fee, on premise, face-to-face sales is 5%, real-time internet sales is 90%, inbound telephone order sales is 5%. I think it'd still be good to hear from her, probably, though.
All right.
I can do that, do you guys want me to scan that and email that to all of you?
I'd at least like to.
You can email it, yeah, you go ahead and email it to me, we'll let Nick take, unless you need that one.
I need that in back.
Okay.
I'll need that in back.
Yeah, I guess, then you probably should.
That's the only copy I've got.
Go ahead and send him one, then.
Page three, I think, is the relevant, most relevant page, but it'd be nice to see the whole thing, all contracts anyway.
I'll scan, this thing, I'm worrying, I'll send it to you.
All right.
Thank you. But yeah, it appears to be a per transaction charge.
Okay, next thing is a letter from Hamilton Center, year end with charts and graphs and... Just going on the DNR. And we have a planning commission report. Monthly report from the clerk's office. And the commissioner's appointments, we are going to postpone them while Jim's here, in case someone has contacted him about showing interest in some of the appointments, and we'll let that ride until the first meeting in February. So that, and that was claim. Okay, Bruce, do you have any other new business? Do you have any other new business?
I do not have any.
Or old business, either one. All right, then we'll move on to Julie Landzone that's not here. Chris, is he here, or did he?
He's gone.
He's gone? Looks like you're up, Justin.
The only thing I've got, we are going to apply for a $5,000 LCC grant for radar units, so I just need your approval to do that, yeah. And it's no cost to the county, they were entirely funded, so...
And it don't affect any other grants that's currently out there?
No, it's a state grant, it's a local, so...
Well, I don't see a problem with it, it's, I think, anytime we can get help, it, shot the arm helps.
Yeah.
Did you have anything else?
No, that was it.
Okay.
Do you need to make a motion on that?
Did you hear?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know if you wanted to make a motion, or...
Yeah, I'll just, I'll go ahead, I didn't know if you were going to make a motion to go ahead and allow Justin to apply for the grant that he was talking about, and get to go ahead and get it if we can.
Yeah, I'll second that. Randy, you're up.
Out of my pocket, right? Are you getting? Nope.
I told you, you jinxed yourself.
Next time, bring a rabbit you find along the road or something, give it, he can go outside and skin it or something.
I was watching something on Discovery Channel, they have about skinning rabbits.
So you know how to do it now?
I do, I do have.
Good.
I've been actually... Yeah, I already had one of those in my yard, which is pretty rotten fairly quickly.
I do have a check we need to get for the new dump truck we got yesterday Friday, $172,234.78.
Could you repeat that number again? 172 what?
234.78. So then we got new fuel, fuel company, they are at Danville, Edinville, Hank, and Indianapolis. They're wanting to put in another on-road tank, if we get into storm or something, they're... Maybe I'll just keep on this.
They can stay ahead of the game?
Yeah. But I have a contract here, one signed, I rejected the first one, I sent this one to Nick.
There's a couple things in there that are still concerning to me, though. They have in their language that indicates that if there's anything that goes wrong with the tank, even if it's due to installation error, that it's our responsibility. And so, I mean, they're the ones installing the tank.
Yeah.
That was the main gun I saw.
And they should have placed in the work.
Basically, all responsibility was placed on the county in the contract, even if it was something they had direct control over. Yeah, I have a marked up version back at my office.
I did, I did.
We'll have to approve that here, if that...
Okay, that's it. I don't know, he's doing that one, go ahead with the paving projects for this year.
I'll send you the one I have marked up.
Okay.
Because there are a couple other mine, that's, that was the big one, the faulty installation or maintenance were the two big parts.
Is, is this their tank, they own the tank?
Yeah, it's their tank, if they...
Do they bring a dike to put it in, or does it?
It's always one of those dual-wall tanks.
Okay, how big is it?
It's another 1,000, I don't know.
1,000.
Or 1,500, I forget what you did, now, same size we've got.
Generally, I think we ought to be responsible for usage-related things, but installation and maintenance would probably be on them, that would be my preference.
Yeah, well, that's what we need it to be.
Yeah. Or defective equipment also on them, that's...
We have a total of $900,000 this year, because that's not counting the money we're giving from the state.
Yeah.
Which is $938,990.76. We'll have to pay 25% of that, which is 312.996, and we're planning on paving, using $371,245 on our own paving, and then another $206,503 on chip and seal. And then, there's a list of all the roads, 275 South 2, we're going to use cold decks on that, 1.35 miles, that'll be in Catlin Road to Fisher Road, then Cardinal Road 1 and Cardinal Road 2, they're going to be, they've already recycled them and got stone hulled on them, and Miss Summerville and then at Pryman, and double chip and seal them. Cardinal 1 Road to Fisher Road, the 425 is $17,798, and Cardinal Road 2, from 425 to 275 South is $50,370. Then we're going to do 1100 East, that's a full coal share, chip and seal, it's in really bad shape, we're going to recycle it and add stones to it, and then double chip and seal it again, that'd be $31,252. And then Jeffries Ford Road 1, Roseville Road to Deer Run, 1.13 mile, $59,051. Jeffries Ford Road 2, from Deer Run to Bridgestown Road, 1.64 mile, $84,151. And Limer Road out here on between two, New Discovery and Crips Bridge Road, we'll pay that $58,095.
Yeah, that one needs, it's in terrible shape.
Chip and seal, we're going to seal, all of Narrows Road from 47 up to 1200 North, we repaved some of that last year, it may be followed up with chip and seal, and we repaved from the bridge back to 47, two years ago, I think, we never did get up there to seal it, so we need to seal that, while we're there, we're just going to go ahead and roll it up to 1200. tow path road, from 500 North to 525 West, we're going to do that one, 525 West 1, from tow path to 900 North, we're going to chip that one, 450 West, between 800 and 900 North, we're going to chip and seal that, and Slab Road out here, we'll requit on it with gravel for 59, and Demmon Road, and gravel, the Angle Road. Beadle Road 3, from Lubinville, Cindy Lewis up to Jackson Bridge, and Apple's Road 3, Beadle Road for 41, Henley Road from Narrows Road, 1200 north, Cook Road, we paved that, now that's one we didn't pay last year, we're going to chip and seal it, and then Cook Road 2, that's the one we paved last year from 100 north, we got 41, we want to follow that up with a chip and seal, and 1200 East, County Line and Ferndale Road, we're going to follow that up with a chip and seal. And then the next two pages is the contract paving.
Yep.
Deer Run Road 2, from Catlin Road and Crane Road, Deer, and then Deer Road 2 again, from Crane Road to Jeffrey Ford Road, Beadle Road 4, from Jackson Road to County Road 900 North, and then County Road 900 North, then Beadle Road to Beadle Road, in the section in, on the state map, it shows 900 north yet, so we have to go this way. And Beadle Road 5, from County Road 900 North to 1050 North, we'll all be paying, along with County Line 460 North, that's from 41 into the Lubinville Corporation Line.
Yep.
And County Line Road, which is Cold Life Road, from 59 to Venzat Road, and then from Venzat Road on underneath.
Looks good.
The contract hanging is satin stump, but, you know, you may have to...
Adjusting...
...do rounds on the demo orders, you know, depending on the spring, you know.
Actually, those roads, the Jeffries Ford and Deer Run, anybody can get from the Catlin, Main Catlin Road over to the Bridgestone Road, and it's, amazes me how many people going to work at the Terre Haute, it's probably a 10-minute shortcut going Jeffries Ford rather than, and there's where they put the new bridge in, there's on up and through there, we're in good shape, it's just that one section where, what are, what is...
We'll pay it all, though.
Yes. Right there, from, on Jeff, or on Deer Run Road after you leave, where Crane Road cuts off, Steve Crane, right there at his barn, and then there's another elevation, his house, is there a spring under there, what, that road keeps dropping there, sometimes it'll drop six, eight inches?
I don't know what that is, that, that all washed out one time, and we backed through the big rock and everything.
And I've noticed, and it's, I can't see it pushing out the side, I don't know if there's an excessive amount of water coming out there, or...
I don't know why, to be honest with you.
I had almost been tempted, I don't know if it could be done before it gets, well, which it would need to be done before it gets blacktop, was to have, like you Mac or somebody to come bore in that hillside in three or four places right where that's at, and shove a tube, a pipe back in there like Sandpoint. And if there's a spring back in there, it would at least relieve it and quit dropping.
If one year that started, we'd had a lot of rain, and that's when it washed out.
I just hate like heck to, I hate like heck to see new blacktop put down right there, and then next year go back and it's four inches low through that hole. I mean, it goes down.
Yeah, it does.
It's 2008, we had a, that's the area we married, and almost rained out our marriage.
Yeah, I think that's the flood that started.
Did you have anything else?
Uh, yeah. I just wanted to, real quick, for the people watching on the internet, and for the media people, what Randy just presented to us, the, how he's gonna spend the $900,000 that we have to spend, it worked out to be about 20 miles of paving and 25 miles of chip and seal.
So there's about 45 mile of new road gonna be, or pretty much new road in the county this year.
So, sorry about that.
No, it's fine.
You wanna go ahead and get this out of the way?
Yes, we got, take care of it.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and approve this out of cycle check to VOMAC Trucking Sales for $172,234.78.
And I'll second that.
Now, Randy, sorry, you can go ahead and...
It's all right. Well, with the contract paving, we need to advertise for some bidders. Address the regular bidders and bidders. Raise your signatures and your motion to approve it.
Look that over.
Get your, get your some copy.
Yes. Something that's necessary.
I'll make a motion that we approve the notice of public bidders for the highway department for the asphalt paving, for the, for the projects that Randy just mentioned, and allow him to go ahead and post the notice and get bids in, so we can get those contracts awarded and get work done as soon as the weather allows us to get it done.
I'll second that. How many bids on this asphalt? Do you usually get very much, one or two?
We only got one last year.
I kind of figured that, there aren't too many guys even doing it, it seems like anymore.
Yeah, and then, well, they're all on, but not one company, really.
That company down in Clinton, I can't remember, Wallace, maybe, or something?
There's several of these small guys around, but guys that actually have a machine to do highways and county roads.
I like the idea of the full width pavement.
Yes.
Do double it up and get that joint and sand it, that's where it always fails. And joint stuff and get down and put on it, that's pretty expensive. Right enough the cost of the project, hundred bit. And that's all I have, I think.
Okay, I have...
Anything for me?
I have, I have one thing. I've had, I've had two complaints, and another person wasn't, and actually, none of them was really even complaining. I think, I know what the whole problem is, the new section of Coxville Road. Brand-new roads always slick, they don't take much. In two weeks, they've had, they, they told me, two different people told me, 13 slide-offs. So next time, next time, next time your guys are sanding, just make sure of that new stretch, because several people's told me, once you hit the old stretch, it's already a little more bitey, it's not been slick. But next, whoever sands that for you, next time, just...
We went out, but we didn't, we didn't get them out for that.
Tell, well, they told me in the last two weeks, these, some of these frosty mornings, they've had several slide-offs in the past two weeks, so... Whoever does sanding down there, just tell them hit that part pretty good, it's new and fresh, and probably a little oil and good, smooth blacktop. So, and that's all I have. Oh, yeah. Anytime, anytime you put new blacktop down, they're gonna go faster.
That's what those radar units report.
I mean, we all do, you know, good road, back to green flag again. Till Justin shows up.
It doesn't matter if he shows up or not, I just run about...
Keep going. It's kind of funny, the older we get, the slower we get, even driving.
Everybody makes fun of me, but I get there just maybe a couple minutes behind them. Gets me, going down 41, one time, I was going down there and a car passed me right south of County Line, and I mean, there's oncoming traffic, so I had to brake, lay him in. And we got down at that first stop right there at, I like to term it a little bit harsh. I pulled right up behind him there.
Yeah. Yeah. It's, it's, I'm amazed how fast people go in 36 and the places they pass you. I left about 4:30 this morning in a triaxle heading north, I thought, well, I was going northern Indiana, but going across 36, I run 60, 65, and they'll fly around you, don't matter if it's W out of line, or... That's about as fast as a triaxle go.
Police and assault.
They probably cut on county.
Oh, yeah. I stayed 55 till I hit that public county. Those guys over is easy to get along with.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Randy.
Thanks, Randy.
Any public comments?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.